Good evening. It is Monday, June 10th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Welcome to our meeting. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Action on minutes. We had two meetings in May. Minutes that we have to review. So the first action on minutes of the May 13th, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second. Comments, corrections? I had a couple. On page one, it's under the heading in Minister Oath of Office, but it's the second paragraph and the fourth paragraph down. We added an agenda item to receive for possible action, option for employees to participate in elimination, and that item was 10.13. So it needs to be corrected in the second paragraph and the fourth paragraph under that administer oath of office. And then on page, on page five, we approved a lot of donations. We were in a wonderful position to approve a lot of donations. On 10.6, that donation for dugout enhancements was in the amount of $1,550. So it needs to be corrected in the heading and in the one-sentence explanation. And then the last is on page seven. The first is a correction, and you can correct me on this, but under a second paragraph, Dr. Val Stracy noted the town meeting. I believe that was Mrs. Raider who shared that information out. And the meetings, the minutes were missing the German information, so I can provide that now because I had that. On a motion made by Dr. Hirsch and seconded by Ms. Baldwin, the board voted unanimously to adjourn to open session at 9:18 PM. Period, because this is really two votes. And then adding, on a motion made by Mrs. Raider and seconded by Ms. Baldwin, the board voted unanimously to adjourn the meeting at 9:19 PM. Other comments on these minutes? All right. So we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor of the meeting minutes as amended. Can you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No. Okay. Thank you. And then May 28th, 2024 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments or corrections to these minutes? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mrs. Raider will abstain.
That's the last one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a great, it was a great meeting. Great meeting.
Dr. Val Stracy, I'm just curious on this one. Do we have to put that same language where we voted to come out of executive session and go back into open session and then adjourn the meeting or no?
Well, we do. I think it's here under executive session, the second paragraph.
Oh, yeah. Okay. You're right.
It got put in a different place.
Skipped over.
Yeah. Yeah. But it's good. Yeah, it's two votes. We need to record it that way. Okay. Number four, public comments for topics on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to comment to the board on topics on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to do so? All right. Seeing none. Item number five, review and approval of expenditures for the month of May 2024. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Okay. Expenditures for the month of May were $5,404,703.91. Our percentages of spending are quite on par with where they were this month last year. We were at 86.35 and 86.47 year-over-year. Revenue for May 2024 was an actual substantial amount this month. We received $204,305.30, which includes $180,091 for the excess cost grant second payment. So noteworthy, we received 68.1% of the eligible special education expenses reimbursement. So our total for the year from the state for reimbursement was $622,572, 75% of which we received in February and 25% of which we received this month. So that is the $180,000 reflected in revenue for May. Other noteworthy items this month. Purchased services were a little bit higher than expected, particularly as relating to special education services. We had to hire a couple of outside contractors to help with services for special education. What else noteworthy this month? Everything else we've talked about in months past, does anyone have anything else they'd like to add for the public to hear based on what we discussed in operations?
Do you need additional comments?
Nope.
Okay. All right. As you noted this in the Operations Committee meeting, we went over the financials and the warrants in detail. Is there a motion to approve the May 2024 financial reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. That is everybody. Thank you. Communications. Do any of my colleagues have communications to share? Okay. I do want to share one communication. Our colleague Christie Faulkner, who has been on the board for several years, had to step back in December after a pretty significant medical event in her life. We are all extraordinarily grateful that she is making a full recovery. But she did reach out today to announce her resignation from the board. I think she has decided that she really needs to continue that recovery and prioritize her own health and her family, which I think I speak for the board. I fully, fully respect that decision as much as it's disappointing to have us, to have her leave the board. But she really feels that that's best and really wants to be able to open her seat to someone who's able to kind of give 100% at this point. So we will be needing as a board to fill her seat. Because of the Guilford Charter, we will need to fill that seat with someone from the same party, as is practical. That's the language. Christie was, or is, a member of the Independent Party, so we will be looking to fill that seat by someone who is a member of the Independent Party. We will send out a communication through our local newspaper as well as through our listserv. We will follow a procedure of accepting letters of interest and resumes from people who are part of the Independent Party. We will hold interviews, as we've done in the past, and then have 60 days to name Mrs. Faulkner's successor. So all of that will happen in the next couple of weeks, the communications going out. But I just want to publicly thank Christie for her many contributions to the board and express her continued, my best wishes for her continued recovery.
And people who are interested have to be members of the Independent Party for at least 90 days to be eligible.
Right.
90 days from the time they apply.
All right. So sad news for us, but again, we are so very grateful for her recovery and appreciative of her service. Number seven, student representatives.
I was hoping to start by saying a brief thank you or shout out, I suppose, to my teachers throughout the years at the public school system, all the way from Guilford Lakes Preschool to Calvin League and Ballin Adams and now this glorious place. I just, I really appreciate the knowledge, the strength of character, and the paths of thinking they've shown me. And I wanted to thank you guys too for staying committed to your curriculums and for just hiring great teachers to you guys. Thank you for that.
What a wonderful, what a wonderful thing to say. Thank you.
Starting off with Calvin League. The first annual Calvin League Color Run is happening Saturday, June 15th, on the Calvin League grounds. Our participants will run or walk a distance of three kilometers, and our young marathoners in training will get covered in a variety of fun color powders if they wish. Grade four students experienced Today in Clay with Cliff Mendelson last week. Mr. Mendelson is a working ceramic artist, potter, and sculptor, and he teaches college as well as elementary age students. In this highly interactive and engaging workshop, fourth graders learn techniques from cultural history while making hands-on projects. The student council finished up their cereal drive at the GoToFood Bank this past Friday, and earlier today, apparently, they lined up all the cereal boxes they got in a domino row, and they knocked them all down. I can imagine it would have been much fun to watch. And there were many field trips recently for Calvin League. Grade four visited an adventure park in Bridgeport, where they pushed themselves out of their comfort zone and learned risk-taking skills, all safely, of course. They enjoyed the ropes courses, climbing ladders, and more. The kindergartners visited Mystic Aquarium recently, and they had a great time around the animals and learning about life in the sea. And the first graders visited the Beardsley Zoo, also in Bridgeport, and had a wonderful, wonderful time visiting all the animals, from peacocks to bison and everything in between. Moving on to Adams. Eighth grade students enjoyed a field trip to Mystic Tree Trails. They navigated through obstacle courses and zip lines in the trees, some as high as 50 feet in the air. Seventh grade students had a team-building trip to Mystic and engaged in problem-solving and collaboration activities. Students in select music ensembles had an adjudication and received high marks across all groups. The music groups at Adams performed their spring concerts to a packed house. And on the third of this month, eighth grade students went to GHS for an orientation. Students went by team and met high school students and staff, toured the building, and learned all about life right here.
And then also at Adams, they had their Semester Two Cares Rewards Ceremony, where they celebrated students from the second half of the year who exemplified the attributes of community, attitude, respect, effort, and scholarship. The eighth grade students presented at a gallery walk of their learning following the Witness Stones Unit. This week, seventh graders are going to travel to Jacob's Beach for their end-of-the-year trip, and eighth graders are going to go to Hammond Asset. Seventh and eighth graders are also going to have their field days at the end of this week. And lastly, eighth graders have their promotion Monday, the 17th, to celebrate the end of their time at Adams and moving up to GHS. And then at Guilford Lakes, kindergarten first and second graders shared their writing about trees, birds, and pollinators with some special guests. All of the students attended a cultural arts assembly where they watched famous, famous works of art come to life through ballet. So dancers from Starship Dance Theater performed excerpts from their original ballet paintings in the museum. And then at Guilford Lakes, there's also a bunch of field trips. So the kindergarten students went on a field trip to go bowling, to think about different forces and have some fun. Second graders traveled to the Thimble Islands to learn about islands and land formations. Third graders visited the Meeks Point Nature Center to learn about non-Connecticut indigenous cultures. And fourth graders experienced early Guilford Day at the Highland and Griswold House, which is a fun Guilford tradition. And then lastly, they also recently had Field Day, which was always a fun day for all the kids. Apparently, the weather that day was perfect, which may be even better.
So for Melissa Jones Elementary School, they just did a variety shows this past Friday. And, sorry, at the end of, at the end of last month, they had a field trip to the Guilford Green, the kindergartners. The fourth graders had a Stuff a Plush event, and the whole school had an end-of-the-year picnic for the first of this month. And looking towards the future, they're going to have a field day where they're going to wear their class colors and bring sunscreen and enjoy the water. And then on Monday, June 10th, today, which is today, they're going to also wear their, oh, I'm so sorry. This is like very confusing. Oh. And then for the fourth, wait, for June 12th, grade four is going to have a stepping up day, and then they're going to have early dismissal. And then they're going to have their class group. And then for Baldwin, the same thing, but. Okay. So for Baldwin Middle School, they had their performance music concerts. Performance music, performance music is valued, I'm so sorry. So for Baldwin School, they had their performance music concerts. They said that their performance music is valued at Baldwin, where each student is required to participate in either band, orchestra, or chorus. In addition, exposure to more performance music, the experience allows students to contribute to a group that is greater than themselves. Over the last three weeks, each of their performances, performance music groups had concerts. Each group performed for the school during the day and then in the evening for family and friends. And they continue to be impressed with the quality of music performances and are proud that Baldwin is, is beginning the rich tradition of music in Guilford, in Guilford schools. And then they had a Bonanza. The Baldwin Bonanza was held on Friday, June 7th. This is a sixth-grade-only event with fun outdoor activities held on the grounds of BMS. Their physical education department organizes the day's events in partnership with their classroom teachers and with the support of their PTO. They said that the day was great and that their sixth graders were happy to make memories.
And then at the high school, there's been various senior events happening. So we've had our senior outing to the Crossley Amusement Park. We had the senior breakfast at the Woodlands. They had various awards, awards nights and scholarship nights. And we had senior prom two weeks ago, about two weeks ago, I think, week and a half. And then we have project, obviously, graduation coming up and project graduation coming up. There's a lot of exciting, exciting stuff happening there. We've had lots of music concerts, event year music concerts also. Finals for underclassmen start Wednesday, and there's also been lots of sports banquets and stuff going on to wrap up the end of, end of the year.
I can tell you that all the seniors have been loving the senior events. They always walk out with a smile on their faces. At senior breakfast, there's the great tradition of the jazz band and the voices performing for their fellow students. I was looking up to perform in that, and we had a great time seeing everyone, let's enjoy the music. And yeah, everyone's super excited for project graduation and of course, getting their diplomas. Sports have, have they ended for every team? Yes. Today's the last day? Yeah. I finished with fruit on states, in states. We were proud to get third in the state for the varsity four vote.
Wonderful.
And you had your last meet today with the student chaise.
Yeah. That was good. That's the one where it was like water impales and jumps, and so that was fun.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, I have been watching the weather since last year.
I know, me too.
With a dripping wet graduation event, and it looks white.
Which is still fun.
Still fun. Looks sunny for Thursday, so that's very exciting. Do you have any questions or comments for our question?
Given that we were thanked by George, we should at least congratulate both George and Clara for both getting into their first choice colleges. Yale for George and Williams for Clara, right? So they're looking forward to not only getting out of here, but a whole new life.
Very exciting.
Congratulations.
We're really happy for you guys.
Well, Dr. Hirsch, you have transitioned as well here because we do want to recognize both of our senior student reps. Yeah, go right ahead. Sit here or go? Whatever. Yeah, we can go up. Yeah, we should go. Okay.
So George, this one's for you. Guilford Public Schools. Certificate of Recognition for George Halliwell is recognized with special thanks and appreciation for your participation as a student representative on the Guilford Board of Education, June 10th, 2024. So thank you.
Absolutely.
I hope that was a wonderful experience.
Thank you. And Claire?
This is a certificate of recognition for Claire Gom. Claire is recognized with special thanks and appreciation for her participation as a student representative on the Guilford Board of Education, June 10th, 2024. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I think for the last time we can say.
Right. And we will welcome you back next year, I believe, correct? Wonderful. So it's just, it's wonderful to have you here every month. It's, it's great to hear what's happening. Wonderful to hear your, your thoughts on, on other things. And we wish the two of you the best of luck next year, and we hope all three of you have a great summer, and we look forward to working with you again next year. So thank you. Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yeah, we'll see you Thursday, coming out.
Yes, absolutely.
Claire, you can have a wonderful nameplate.
If you would like your nameplate.
I'll take that.
Absolutely. To remember us all this.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right. Dr. Freeman, number eight superintendent's report.
I have a very brief report this evening. I will just reiterate, Clara mentioned that Thursday evening on the Guilford Green will be the Guilford High School graduation this year. We are very excited about that. And then I will direct the board's attention to item 8.1 in your packet, and I just want to inform you that we have approved the enrollment of an exchange student for next year. The student comes through an approved exchange program, will be joining us from Spain. We know that they will have a very, a very beneficial experience with us, and we look forward to having them within our student body next year.
What grade?
12th grade.
Is it always 12th grade?
No. No, they can come in any, this particular student will be joining us for, for 12th grade.
Have we had an exchange? When was the last time? It's been a couple of years.
We have.
Two currently? Two currently this year.
Do you have somebody, we have Zoe from France. Yeah, there's a couple.
That's right. Okay. For some reason, I had forgotten that we had some this year.
We did drop off for a few years around the pandemic. We have two students currently enrolled and again, are excited to have this one next year.
That's right. Okay. That's wonderful.
Georgia from Italy.
That's great. That's right. That's right. Excellent.
And I'm excited to say that concludes my report for this evening.
Wow.
It's like summer.
All right. Which means we are up to the board of agenda, the board of agenda, listening to you, the board agenda, which is also not particularly long this evening. We're going to start with a personnel item. So we need to act on a couple of items here. We are asked to please ratify the retirement of the following teachers. Pam Mayer, Baldwin School Counselor, 47 years of experience. Judy Bologna, Baldwin Math Sixth Grade Teacher, 21 years of experience. And Susan Lott, Guilford High School English Teacher, 29 years of experience. An amazing amount of time dedicated to supporting and instructing and guiding students. Is there a motion to ratify the retirement of these three teachers?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A huge thank you to these individuals, for sure. And then we're also asked to ratify the resignation of the following teacher, Rebecca Luther, Lakes Speech Pathologist, three years of experience. Is there a motion to ratify this resignation?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And certainly a thank you to her as well. Okay. 9.2 is to act on acceptance of registration for two kindergarten students under the age of five requesting enrollment in 2024, 25 year. If you recall, last month, we did this for a larger number of students. Again, for the public, effective July 1, 2023, Public Act Number 23, 2008, in the state of Connecticut, amended the age of entrance for kindergarten students. Students must have turned five years of age by the September 1st of the school year in order to register, but parents and guardians may request admission for a child born between September 2nd and December 31st. The respective building principal or designated certified staff assesses the child to ensure that admitting such a child is developmentally appropriate. So we are being asked to approve the addition of two students to this group, one from Jones, or one to enter Jones and one to enter Leet. Is there a motion to approve the admission of these two students?
So moved. Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. That's everyone. Thank you. Next, 9.3, we're being asked to approve a donation of $5,000 from Terry Bergantino for student lunch debt. And I think I'll read this letter. Thank you for your letter requesting that the Guilford Public Schools accept a donation in the amount of $5,000 from Terry Bergantino. The funds are being donated to pay for students' lunch debt, especially for children of single-parent homes or for families who may be struggling. Per Board Policy 3222, the Board of Ed must approve this request. So great thanks to the generous donation in support of some of our families and to address that student debt. Is there a motion to approve this donation?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. I think that's everybody. Thank you. And 9.4 is a receive item only, the Educator Evaluation Plan. Dr. Freeman, do you have an approach we're going to take here?
Yes. So I would like to begin by inviting Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Hamel and Ms. Mel Queen Teasdale to come join us at the table where the students just were. Dr. Goss is going to take this presentation, and these representatives of the Educator Growth Committee, Ms. Peck was also a member of this committee, worked on this new draft of our Educator Growth Plan. It has been approved by the committee, and they'll be sharing those results with you tonight. We'll be presenting it here to you and asking for your approval at your next meeting.
Right.
Is that accurate? And so that we can then forward it on to the Connecticut State Department of Education for their approval. This is a required revision by the State Department of Education, but we are really excited about the results that we have to share with you tonight, and I believe you will see the instructional underpinnings in the Educator Growth Plan that you have seen in the student education and pedagogy that we've been presenting to you as well. I'll stop there and simply turn it over to Dr. Goss and the rest of our team, who will take you through the document.
We were really excited about the opportunity to reexamine educator evaluation. As you know, in the last couple of years, there has been a hold on the previously required numerical rating of individual teachers at the end of each year, and that's been in place since the pandemic, but also that very curiously aligned with some research that suggested that that was very ineffective at changing teacher practice and at supporting students and growing their learning. So there were a couple of longitudinal studies that were done that said that what we were doing and what we thought was best practice at the time wasn't particularly effective at improving teacher teaching, teacher instruction or student learning. So we, we knew that, and so we had the opportunity to reimagine educator evaluation. And for the first time in my career, they offered us the opportunity to have just sort of a couple of things that they required us to do. of a couple of things that they required us to do, and everything else was open to us to do it the way that we saw fit. And so we positioned this group around what is it that we imagine would support teachers in their growth? And we did a significant amount of research, these folks. And all the folks listed on the front of your educator growth plan spent three long days looking at a bunch of research, having deep conversations about what teachers were experiencing in classrooms, and then talking about what it was we could do to make that whole system better, both for teachers and for student learning. And I think that's the thing that impressed me most about this committee. Not only did they hang in there for three days of really intense research, but they also really were focused on student learning. And so the entire purpose of this plan is focused around all of us working together to be the best teachers that we possibly can be on behalf of students. And I hope that you'll get to see all of that tonight. I'm going to now turn it over to Ms. Mel Queen Teasdale, who will pick us off.
Thank you. One of the things that Dr. Goss just said that I wanted to reiterate was, despite the fact that it was this three days of pretty intense research, I left every single day feeling very energized and feeling really excited about what we kind of came up with. So we started with this concept of what our foundational beliefs were. And what was really pretty interesting is that not only did the people in the room seem to be cohesive in terms of what they were thinking was our foundational beliefs, there was so much research that also supported this. So we started with this concept of everyone in the room really believing in the idea that every student in Guilford Public Schools has the right to have really high-quality instruction, that equity was very important to us. The other foundational belief that was really interesting was this very positive, in my opinion, sense that people really do want to do well, that the best teachers and the best instructional practices are oftentimes coming from a place of teachers really being very motivated to be the best teachers they could be and to access as many students as we can access with really, really high-quality education. And that belief, again, that every student in Guilford deserves that. One of the things in that concept was this idea of this theory why leaders who believe that hard work and good work is natural to being a professional and to being a person and to really embrace that idea of people really do want to do as best as they can. We then took a little jaunt into this idea of systems of learning and basically really reiterating that the purpose of our organization in Guilford Public Schools is this idea that instruction is our game. This is what we are here for. This is the thing that we are called to do, that we are meant to do, and all of the practices that teachers in schools should be doing should be towards that plan. And again, this idea that we can't be good teachers, we can't be good systems in silos, that it really does require a collaborative approach, and it does require that we are working together, which then goes into this concept of liberatory improvement, which I think was pretty radical for me as a teacher, and it was really terrific to have these open conversations. It's really asking us to rethink the hierarchy of what makes good teachers. Is it a top-down approach or is it a more organic coming from, you know, the people, so to speak? Giving teachers a little bit of agency, but a shared responsibility with our administrators so that it's really an us rather than, you know, us and them. And finally, this concept of continuous improvement. We really talked a lot about that. Some of the best teaching practices that many of us have either observed as administrators or have tried to do as teachers has this recursive component to it, that it's continuous improvement, that we take a look at things that are effective, things that work, stop, revisit them in collaboration with knowledgeable others, and then continue to grow and to continue to improve. So we started from this concept of foundational beliefs. Our next slide here was then, once we kind of decided by where our bearings were, we came up with some of our goals for coming up with a revised tool for teacher improvement. And I think all the bullet points that you can see here, they speak to those foundational beliefs. This idea of constantly improving our instructional practices, trying new things in order to get better, having ample opportunities to reflect and grow. The concept of reflection came up quite a bit as being really important to develop metacognitive approaches to how we're instructing and to really talk about what works in terms of reflection to get better as teachers. We were also encouraged in a really nice way, and there's things in the plan that would really help us, to take some risks, that some of the best teaching experiences that we have sometimes are by taking a risk, what will work, how can we reach more kids, how can we continue to be better? And this plan really is very supportive of that risk-taking, that professional risk-taking. And it also really encourages us to stay current in our instructional practice, which I think is really, you know, important and exciting to kind of nerds like us who really like what we're doing. In a loving way. Again, this concept of having a voice and having some choice and opportunities was really very exciting to explore too, and to see that there's tons of research to back that, and we really wanted to keep that in our plan. And consistency of plan implementation, there was a lot of really great discussions about how things work in different places throughout the district. We really wanted to think about that consistency piece. And then finally, just again to reiterate, the end goal really is to make sure that every student in Guilford Public Schools has access to really high-quality instruction.
Thank you. I will never speak after you again. Thank you. Glad I helped you prep. All right. Obviously, you're all very familiar with the portrait of a graduate, and Kara was just speaking about high-quality instruction. So, you know, without going through the bullets, I think the point we wanted to make or communicate to you guys that we see the high-quality instruction is the same for the learners at every stage, not just the learners, that it's the teachers and learners, and again, embracing the, it's a continuous process. So that's why we're putting it, this is, oh, I forgot this part, I'm sorry. This is the same plan for teachers and administrators. That's a new piece, as far as what you may be familiar with. And then moving on to the next slide and looking at state and national standards, obviously we needed to be mindful of all those, so the components are hit. Nothing new there, one through three Connecticut standards, teaching and leading. If you're not familiar, the rubric for effective service delivery, that's in regards to support services in special education. And then I think you're, and then the last one, I'm sorry, that is what we as a district recognize as the preeminent professional learning organization in the United States. So we wanted to, going back to the research and really nerding out the subverb that I will now use every day, so I like it. So we wanted to align our plan to that as well. And lastly, I think when you look through the document a little bit more, you'll see the pull-out for the professional learning is, for new learning is going to be new, speaking through the research that we wanted to identify there. There are four types of effective professional learning for educators, specifically the pull-out, and then continuing with the collaboration model that we've talked about, embracing the coaches as well, and then tapping into some advice networks focusing on translating our knowledge into the day-to-day practice with kids.
And so.
Reluctantly, I'm going to turn it over to Amy.
Thank you very much. I wanted to just take a little bit of a dive into each one of those types of professional learning because there is a lot of research around what makes effective professional learning, and folks like to pretend that there's not, but there really is. And so what we learned is that pull-out professional learning is all about enactment when you're learning, or all about exploration. When you're learning something new, when you need a little bit of new information or instruction in a specific area, when you're novice in a specific area, that pull-up professional learning can be really vital to giving you the new information that you need. Also, the next kind of educator professional learning is educator collaboration, when teachers get to work together or administrators get to work together and learn from one another through both peer observation and through those conversations. We look at that as our opportunity to work with our coaches and to do peer observations. The next piece is instructional coaching, and the board has been wonderful in supporting instructional coaching over the years. It is one of these four basic types of really strong professional learning for teachers. So I'm excited that we here in Guilford value instructional coaching. And the instructional coaches will be embedded into the system as supports for teachers as they go on, both as content specialists, but also, you know, in a really focused way of helping people unpack their own thinking and reflect on their own learning so that it's not really about the coach being the expert, it's really much more about the coach facilitating the learning for the teacher who's kind of probing their own thoughts. And then the last piece is not something that we can necessarily guarantee will happen, but we can facilitate it. So an educator advice network is when teachers talk to the other teachers that they're near in the hallway or that they have lunch with, and they get all the really good juicy tips. And we know that that kind of learning is one of the most effective ways to spread really good practice. And so we want to do everything that we can to enable teachers to talk with other teachers so that they have those opportunities to learn from one another. And so we won't always be able to facilitate that because if we formalize it, then that sort of ruins it. But what we can do is make sure that there are opportunities on professional learning days for teachers to work together, give vertical and horizontal opportunities for collaboration both across grade levels and courses, but also from preschool to 12-plus, making sure that teachers get to work together and hear from one another as often as possible, but without officially formalizing that so as to ruin it. And I am now going to turn it over to Mr. Hamel.
All right. So I guess I'm a nerd also. So are we, by the way.
I was just trying to say.
I feel right at home.
Preaching the choir.
I just want to start by saying that this committee was one of the most enjoyable committees I've been a part of in my entire career. I mean, part of it was the charge, right? I think as Amy said upfront, the charge is pretty exciting for us, right? We've been doing it a certain way for a long time, and this gave us a chance to really think outside of that and to really apply the beliefs we have in Guilford to an evaluation plan. And I stopped calling it an evaluation plan when I started working on this committee. This really growth plan, that is truly what this is, right? So the old plan that we were using or in the past, principals and school leaders are often seen as the keepers of knowledge. We would go in and do direct observations of teachers, give direct feedback. And we've learned through the research that that's really not that effective. So we're finally looking at it through another lens. In this plan, the main shift for the administrators or the evaluators will be not to give direct feedback to teachers, there's a role for that, but to create the structures and the systems that support teachers in their reflection. We try to keep the work at the closest level possible to where the actual teaching and learning happens, right? So that's a really nice way to frame this. So what is our work going to look like? Well, on this slide, you'll see, create systems and schedules for collaboration. That would mean making sure there's common planning time, collaborative time, PLC time within the daily schedule. We want to engage at least three formal check-ins with each person that we're going to be working with. And those check-ins are going to be much more give and take in terms of setting teacher goals, right? It's going to be about co-planning rather than coming to your evaluator and just being told what to do or, you know, suggested what to do. I think the biggest part of our role shift is the next one, though, is to solicit feedback from educators about what obstacles they're facing. And then our job is to try to get rid of those obstacles, to minimize those as much as possible so that the teachers can do the work of learning and reflecting. Of course, we have to monitor school and growth toward our modified quality instruction and our district objectives. And we will provide direct instructional support, especially for newer teachers, teachers new to Guilford, and for teachers who either need or want more support. So there is a role for that as well. Next slide. And also, there is still a process for dealing with dispute resolutions. It's the same process that was in the other plan. The local and state reporting guidelines will be observed, so Dr. Freeman has to send certain things to the state, and that's all part of this plan. But the most important to me is that the forms and the samples of the forms you see in this document are meant to promote consistency throughout the district. We've heard that a couple of times in the comments, and that's something we really, as a committee, looked at pretty seriously. How do we make sure that we're implementing this in a consistent way in each school building and it doesn't look different at Baldwin than it does at Adams and it does at the high school? So I think that section of this plan was really critical to our development.
And of course, because we all nerded out together, we wanted to share our references with you.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
One thing I didn't hear in here was any sort of peer input. Is that, was that discussed? Is that something that's part of this that's just kind of embedded that I missed or?
Yeah, I actually think, yeah.
Is that the core?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I was saying, actually, when you get into the details of the plan, I think that's at the core of it. So instead of an evaluator coming in and observing, teachers are encouraged and required in this plan to observe each other.
If you look at page 12, Level 1, and page 12, you'll see where those peer observations are called out. But again, all those layers of peer collaboration, of peer learning network, so that all of that component is built in as well.
Awesome. And those peer observations are done in a collaborative collegial way? They are not, they're not evaluative per se? They are sharing information with one another and learning from one another?
Everything you guys have been talking about is something that I know we implement in my own office in a very unofficial manner. It's not education, but you know, you're always trying to learn from each other, and you just sit there and you collaborate and you say, hey, you did that great, or you know, I would think about this. And I love that collaborative work that I do at my job, and I'd love to see the teachers being able to do that because I do think that makes everybody better. So that's just my personal aside.
And I like the ownership that gives back to the educators, right? And like you said, it's not, I like that it's not called evaluation. My mother and aunts and grandmothers were teachers, and you know, you would sit in the classroom, get all nervous, and the principal comes in, observes you, and leaves, and that was the old way of doing things. This is how it should be. Our teachers should be growing as much as our students. So I'm really happy to see what you guys have developed here.
We really wanted to think of it as sort of fractals within the whole system. So, you know, the student learning is mirrored in the teacher's learning, which is mirrored in the administrator learning. All of that should look the same, just with the different content for the different layers.
There's a wonderful case study to show how effective this whole rubric is, and that's the country of Finland. 20 years ago, Finland was 25th or 28th in the country. We were about the same level in terms of achievement. And they had been following what they thought was the best model in the world, which was American. And they finally decided that it wasn't the best model, and they developed a whole schema which said, let's rely on teachers, let's support teachers and administrators, let's not go top-down any longer. And this whole notion of collaboration and feedback and peer and evaluation on the basis of student learning, they've been number one for the last seven years.
That's the one I was telling you about.
We often chat about that.
We have spoken with this board several times this year, over the last several years, about centering student voice and student learning in our classrooms. This document centers teacher voice and teacher learning. It's not about a four-point scale. It's not about ranking and sorting our teachers. It's about investing in their learning. Quite honestly, I would suggest that since 2012, we have been waiting for the state of Connecticut to catch up with how we want to do teacher growth and adult learning here in Guilford. And the new changes at the state level have allowed us to put forward a plan that leans into our approach to learning, not one that we have to work against and try to twist to allow us to do what we want to do. This actually encourages us to do adult and professional learning the way we think it should be done, and I can't say enough how appreciative I am of the committee who pulled this work together.
The document itself looks so different than that one. Long.
There's not 30 pages of four-point scales.
Right? Scale after scale after scale.
Yes.
And so this then gets sent after it is approved by the board to the State Department of Education for their approval?
Yes. Yes, and we had, they gave us a list of basically boxes to check, and we went through and we were able to list the page numbers for each one of those items so that we'll be able to provide them with that information. So I'm hopeful that they'll approve it.
Is this approval every year?
I believe it's reapproval every year. What we'll do next, in this year is officially a pilot, right? So we'll learn what we need to learn, and then we'll make the tweaks that we need to make. Hopefully, from there, there won't be radical changes each year, but we'll see. We'll see what's needed.
Great.
So this is a paradigm shift. It's radical in the sense that it's not tampering with one variable. It's big. The lenses change, as you said. It's big, the lenses change, as you said. Given that, I would encourage us to, starting now, to be, gather as much data of any kind to ask ourselves, in what way are things better because of this? Because in five years, if we have documented this, it would be important just for the model itself, but it would be important from a, you know, explain to the state that this is one of the districts that's making a big difference. I suspect we're not going to see very many plans in the state that will be in this league.
I, I might modulate that a little bit, Dr. Hirsch. I, I think it's less of a whole paradigm shift for us than finally being able to write a document that isn't pretending to check the boxes the state was asking us to check while we were trying to insist on doing. You know, the, the teacher growth component of the old plan was always built around, not always, but was most recently built around a continuous improvement, Plan Do Study Act model, the idea of small tests of concept. This allows us to say out loud and proudly everything that we've believed and tried to keep a little quiet for several years.
All the better that we should, that we should prove it.
Thank you. Dr. Goss, I want to just congratulate you on this. This was a tremendous amount of work, this committee was fabulous. I was really honored to be part of it. It was such a thoughtful group of people, funny group of people. And like Kara said, you laughed at each one, saying, oh, that was, that was a good way to spend Tuesday. So, I'm really, I'm really proud of this. I think this was a great job, really well done, and, and it was quite an effort. Like, I was shocked when you came in with like, took everything that we said and compiled it into something that we could actually tangibly present, so really well done.
Thank you, thank you for, for serving on the committee, because it must have been quite something to be on this ride with us.
It was, it was great, I learned a ton.
Is there a way of replicating for, let's say, all the teachers, some mini version of the process you went through, so they can understand how this was derived without just being, having to read it? Because it sounds like the process itself was so powerful, that once you went through it, you began to appreciate its, its, its value, as opposed to having to receive it.
Yeah, well, there is, there's a required orientation component each year, but I think in this first year of a new plan, we'll have to do that a little, a little more than usual. And so, yes, I think some, some version of a, of a mini, mini-plan would definitely be in order.
You've got a large enough committee of teachers to...
Regina said she wants to leave that out.
She's still working out the games, Dr. Goss. I'll see you in July or August. Well, this is, this is really exciting. So, for us, this is a receive item, which means over the next month, we have the time to kind of dive into it. If we have questions, or?
To me and Dr. Goss, we'd be happy to respond or reach out and include the proper voices to respond with us.
Wonderful. And thank, thank you for, well, thank you for, for doing all this work, but thank you for being here to walk us through...
The other thing, Dr. Bell, I'll add, I don't know that it's required, but we will make a copy available to the public at Lathrop House as we would with, with a textbook or a curriculum approval.
That's great.
Approval, so if anybody else is interested, they're welcome to come and see the document as well, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you. All right, we are up to reports from committees. Does the Policy Committee have anything to report out?
No, we do not. I think our next meeting is the 24th at, we're not here. We are at Leat. No, I think it's Leat.
No, Leat.
Leat, I wrote it down.
It's the L school.
Leat, so to the L, the L one. No, it's at Leat, okay.
All right. Operations Committee, is there, Mr. Bell, anything else to report out?
Not a ton that we haven't covered. I think, you know, as always this time of the year, I like to thank our facilities team for all that they're about to get into this summer, because there's a lot of projects on the docket, and they're all going to keep very busy, so thank you to everyone.
Excellent. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee.
The committee met a few weeks ago on the topic of the current use of and future use, and impact of technology on instruction, and we discussed everything from artificial intelligence, social media, smartphones, and it's a conversation that was a beginning as opposed to an ending. And it was, it opened up a whole set of questions and issues that, you know, affecting all school systems, but we were, it's now a part of our agenda.
Terrific. Thank you. Liaisons to town committees, anything to report out?
No.
And we'll have to, I will own putting some concentrated effort into figuring out the Learn Board of Directors as we move forward. We are up to number 11. Public comment, doesn't have to be on the board agenda, is there anyone here? We invite you up to the podium, we please ask you to give your name and address, and to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Would you like me to tell them? That would be very... My name is Sharon Ardito, and I live on Durham Road in Guilford, and I work at Calvin Leat School. And so, I understand that the budget was cut, budget cut was really difficult, and it was a hard decision that needed to be made, but the safety of our children should be the number one priority, especially in this day and age. And since 1999, 440 school shootings have been recorded since Columbine, 203 students and educators have died, and 453 have been injured in these events at the K through 12 level. More than 370,000 students have experienced gun violence at school. In 2022, there were 46 school shootings, 82 in 2023, and 18 so far this year. The shooters have been as young as six years old. Our safety monitor at Calvin Leat has been fantastic. Not only does she constantly check all the doors and hallways and the school perimeter, she also knows every student's name and grade along with the parents. She also helps the bus drivers with disruptive students, which does happen quite a bit, and she is outside during recess watching over all of, all of our children, since the back of our school is not fenced in, and anyone can wander onto the property. Now, all the students, teachers, and staff respect her and feel safe because of her presence. She is involved in everyone's day-to-day activities, field trips, and learning experiences. I don't know how the other elementary safety monitors operate, but the safety monitor at Calvin Leat is irreplaceable, she is irreplaceable. They should all be like her. I'm not sure exactly how much the school is saving, I estimate around $100,000 on the high end, but as I stated earlier, the safety of our children, educators, and staff should not be an expense that is cut. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? No. All right. Any closing comments from anyone? All right. That concludes this part of our meeting. We do have an executive, executive session tonight. The topic will be the superintendent's evaluation. It will be an executive session of the board. We will be inviting Dr. Freeman to be part of our executive session for part of the evaluation, and, and then we'll continue on after, after that period of time. When we come out of the exec, executive session, there will be no further discussion, and we will not be holding any other votes. So, I am going to ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
The motion should include to invite me based on the recent...
Oh, the motion should include that as well?
Yeah, based on the recent legal update we saw.
Okay, so, thank you, that's very helpful. So, I'm asking for a motion to go into executive session and have Dr. Freeman join us for part of that executive session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's everyone. Okay, thank you.